Raymore City Council, uh, meeting. Call roll confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
I'm present. We do have a quorum. If everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a presentation this evening, so all come on down there.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Deputy City Clerk Erica Hill, who has recently, last week at conference, obtained her registered city clerk designation from the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association. This is one of her first of four levels of certification she will strive to attain. I'm very proud, proud of her perseverance and her dedication to the city clerk's office. She makes my life a lot easier and is a great asset to our office. I also want to thank Mayor and Council and Mr. Fearborn, the recognition of realizing the importance of our continued education, what it means to us, what it means to better serve you and to the citizens of Raymore. So, thank you. Congratulations, Erica.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we do have a personal appearance tonight by the city auditor.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to return to present our audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended October 31st, 2015. The audit package was prepared. There you go. Package was prepared as a comprehensive annual financial report. After the review processed by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, the city was presented with a certificate of achievement for financial reporting, and this is included in this year's audit package on page seven. This is the fifth straight year that this award to the city, this fifth straight year of this award to the city for this finance department. Overall, the financial audit went very well this year. The city staff has continued to draft more and more of the financial statements and ensure that the year-end balances are recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We had no adjusting entries that affected the financial records of the city. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, that they are fairly presented in all material respects, and our report on compliance with laws, regulations, and grant agreements do not disclose any items of noncompliance. Our report on internal controls discloses a similar item that has been included in prior years relating to the assistance of us as auditors to draft the complete financial statements and related note disclosures. This is a common item for a city of this size and does not affect any state or federal funding or your bond covenants. However, as noted in this item, we address that the city has prepared more of the draft than done in prior years, and we are working with the city staff to continue more of this each year. In the management discussion and analysis section, you can see summarized comparative tables to the prior year and narratives to help you further understand the statements. I'd like to thank the city staff for their responsiveness to our requests during the audit and look forward to working with them again next year. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Move on to staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a report for the Community Development Department.
Thank you. Two items this evening. First, there is a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting being held tomorrow evening here at, here at City Hall. With this council room being used as a, a voting place, the, the commission will be having their meeting in the executive conference room tomorrow. Again, that begins at seven o'clock. And then second, one of the items that, that was identified in one of the community conversation meetings held back in February was for the city to become a community for all ages. And to move forward with that particular initiative, the city will be hosting a, a community meeting on Thursday, March 24th, so it's a week from this Thursday, March 24th at 6:30. That community meeting will be held here at the council room. The purpose of the meeting is, is to discuss the initiative, to explain what the initiative is to residents, and to gather public comments, public input on that particular program. It's important for us to hear from the residents, to be able to understand what, you know, what needs and what the community as a whole can do to become a community for all ages. So, it's really a, an information gathering session for us. It is an open meeting. Everyone is welcome, and again, that's Thursday, the 24th at 6:30. And this particular meeting helps the city also, it, as it, it tries to move forward through the, through the entire recognition program of becoming a community for all ages. So, an important session, and we do welcome everybody to participate. That concludes staff comments.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would call on Mr. Mustine to make the report for Parks Recreation.
Thank you, sir, Mayor, members of council. I've submitted a written, a written report this month, but I want to highlight a couple of things. The farmer's market will begin on June 6th. That is the opening night of, of this program. In January, we held our vendors' meeting, and we hosted a meeting where people, the vendors knew and, and ones that have previously participated in the market could come, ask questions, especially with the depot on, onsite now. So, we had an excellent turnout at the meeting. As of today, we have nine of the 16 spaces underneath the depot already reserved, and we have 26 of the 34 spaces in the grass already reserved. So, once again, the community's proven that they really like this program, and so just looking forward to that. We're already preparing for that. Something else that I brought to you guys last fall was the Raymore Legacy Program. We've been working on brochures, information on that. It's all online now. The brochures are on my office. They'll be put right up here to City Hall, put on the kiosk out, out front. And within just two weeks, we've already sold two bricks and two memorial benches. So, those are on order, and we'll get those going as soon as weather permits, and we, we have enough to make a significant order that's worth the, worth the order and the shipping. Couple other things. We're in the middle of our baseball renovation project, and thankfully to excellent weather this, this winter, we're already three weeks ahead of schedule. So, should, should the rains come and slow us down, we've got some ground that we can, you know, make up. So, we're, project's going along very well. The back, the, the large poles for the backstops have ordered, should be installed next week. The dugouts are going in this week, so that project's just moving right along. Unless the weather really kicks in, we don't anticipate this stalling and, and actually ending ahead of schedule for our baseball season. And two events coming up. This Saturday, the 19th, the South Grand Watershed River Alliance is hosting a, a cleanup day at Good Parkway Linear Park off Lucy Webb, and that's, that begins, let's see, at 8:30 to 11:30, and it's just a trash cleanup. We're just getting in the, getting in the dirt and the mud and the water and cleaning up stuff. So, everybody's welcome. There'll be refreshments. Parking can be along Huntsman Drive there. And then one more final plug is the Easter Festival and our Arbor Day celebration coming up on March 26th. Arrival times around 9:00 to 9:30 at Memorial Park, and the hunt starts at 10:00 a.m. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Nathan, how much are the bricks?
The bricks?
From the legacy program?
They're $80.
$80.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mustine, I appreciate your humility, your humility and modesty, but I understand the, uh, Raymore competitive soccer program had a successful opening yesterday.
Yes, sir.
You want to comment on that?
I would love to. We have, we have a fantastic coach in our Raymore competitive soccer program, and, and our opening season, first game, we, we took him to town. So, good, it's a good show for our first season, our first game, and soccer teams have all been placed. Kids are placed. Soccer practice starts this week, and so the recreation program's right on track. Volleyball's going, and we'll be doing, again, tryouts and competitive training and camps and stuff for the Raymore United program at the end of this season.
Not all of us are as shameless as you, sir.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mustine. I'll call on Chief Zimmerman to make a report for the Police Department and Emergency Management Services.
I want to give a special thanks to Councilman Holman, because this is the first of probably many presentations to come, um, at the first of each month. But we decided that the first presentation to you all should be about emergency management. This is the start of severe weather week, as you've probably seen advertised on all of the TV stations. The statewide tornado drill is going to take place tomorrow all across the state of Missouri at 1:30. So, you'll hear the tornado sirens go off, obviously at a date, on a day and time that they don't usually go off, all throughout the state of Missouri, and those corresponding counties in Kansas that are here in the metropolitan area will also take place tomorrow at 1:30. But then the statewide drill for the rest of the state of Kansas will take place at 6:30 tomorrow night. One of the things that, when Mr. Fearborn and I talked about this presentation, that I might give an update or at least a little bit of information about the conversion from the Code Red system to Everbridge. I know there was a, some considerable concern about that conversion that was made at the county level, and what that was going to mean for our residents is, is they were going from one notification system to another. The most important thing is, the system does the same thing. There's still no cost to participate in that system, but you do have to sign up. Your information from Code Red did not carry over to the new Everbridge system, and that notification is received the exact same way that it always was. So, any number that you want to place into that system as you register for that will notify you, whether it's via text, landline, cellphone number, for any location that, that you feel is important. So, if you want to receive those weather notifications, you know, for your residents here in Cass County, or for your business down in Harrisonville, or those sorts of things, you can register any and all of those telephone numbers and locations, so you receive that notification. It is important for all of our residents to note, to, to sign up for that notification, because that's how you receive those weather alerts. There was information that went out to all of our Code Red users, so ironically, we use Code Red to notify people that Code Red was going away. But that is still available via the Cass County Emergency Services Board website to sign up for that, or they can call down to that office, and I'll give that information, that website and that phone number at the end. As of right now, approximately 800 or so Raymore residents have signed up for Everbridge, so, you know, we always pushed for Code Red. We're going to make that same push, you know, for Everbridge, because it's important to get those weather notifications. During this time of year, severe weather, obviously, you know, April, May, we try to make sure that our residents understand the difference between the types of watches and warnings, so we do a lot of education during this time of year. But residents, I mentioned Everbridge and Code Red. It's important to have multiple ways to access that information. Obviously, TV is a very important way to get that information. Radio, a lot of our residents, especially our elderly residents, have NOAA radios, if you're familiar with those, and then the internet. We not only post a lot of information on our websites, but there's the National Weather Service and other websites where you can get that information if you have access to the internet as well. As far as a watch, if you're not familiar, those are much longer in duration. We're letting people know the potential of, of bad weather coming, and then a warning is when that bad weather is actually supposed to strike in the area that we're looking at. We sound the sirens here. Obviously, if, if we are in the path of, of that type of severe weather, we don't sound the sirens for severe thunderstorms, but only in tornado warnings. So, you, you will see differing opinions about that from community to community, but we do not sound them in severe thunderstorms, but rather in tornado warnings only. But we encourage our citizens, if, if they have questions about, about the weather, about, you know, getting any of these types of notifications, you know, they certainly can contact the police department or emergency management and, and Mr. Murdock, and I'm going to put his phone number out there for everyone to call, is 892-3032. And one last time, if individuals in our community are interested in signing up for Everbridge at www.casscountyesb.com, or Robin Teeman, who is the director down there, at So, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those. And I, I would say one, one final thing, as, as I mentioned, Mr. Fearborn will have me on your agenda, the first meeting of every month, and so if there are any particular things that you're interested in hearing about, I, I'm happy to take any and all requests. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chief. You said that we sound the alarms. Who is "we"? Who is responsible for activating those alarms when they are justified?
That would be me and the mouse in my pocket. Actually, myself and Mr. Murdock are the ones, if, if, you know, we are monitoring the weather, and we are the ones that are making the call to dispatch to sound the alarms.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Served to my court and the volley back. Thought your presentation, as I suspected, was very well done and very informative. Thank you. I'm curious, I see a lot of times on, excuse me, on Channel 9, different cities host storm spotter training. Have we ever done that, or have we ever considered doing that, or might we do that in the future?
Yes, sir, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we co-hosted a storm spotter training at a church over in Belton just a couple of weeks ago. So, we were the co-host with the county of that, and I had previously been to storm spotter training down in Peculiar, actually, when I first started to work here, and went again, and always learned something. And the National Weather Service does an outstanding job during those presentations. It's free. It, you know, the community should attend, because you learn something about, you know, what those clouds mean and, and, you know, what to expect when those types of storms hit, so.
Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't give a big thank you to Mike Eke for putting out the information when we were made aware of, of the switch over from Code Red to, to Everbridge. We, you know, we, we were in a hurry to get information out to our community, and, and so Mike was a huge help in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add to that, that out where I live is the highest elevation in Cass County, and so we see the storms coming in before anybody else does, and every once in a while, I'll look out and I'll see the police out there, and I know that you're monitoring it.
Thank you.
I feel very safe.
You need to be a storm spotter.
Thanks, Chief. Next week, March 21st, the council will be in work session, single item on the work session agenda at this time, which is digging back into the strategic plan and taking it to the next level. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispense of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include Item A, City Council Minutes for February 22nd, 2016, the final acceptance of the Adams Street Water Main Project, and C, the final acceptance of the City Council Chamber Sound System Project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can hear really good now. Thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Bill 3147 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3147 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving the Highway 58 and Dean Avenue Tax Increment Financing Plan, approving the redevelopment area, approving the redevelopment project, and adopting tanks, tax increment financing therein, and taking other actions related to approval of the plan.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3147 for the Highway 58 and Dean Avenue Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Seconds. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3147. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I think that there are some representatives from Cadence and Company here tonight. As stated before, and as I stated in a previous meeting, I will be reminding people of this. Glad you're coming to town. Great development. Saw another collision at the intersection the other day. I travel through there twice a day at a minimum. I would just recommend that you tell your tenants that that is a high-traffic location for us, a high-accident location, and this body, and me in particular, will be monitoring that. They should be prepared for emergency traffic changes if necessary, if the traffic study does not bear out that that intersection can handle the additional traffic without a jump in increase, a jump or increase in collisions. Again, I stated that before, and I said that I would probably, you would probably get tired of hearing me on that point. I just want to make sure everybody understands that it is certainly a public safety concern of mine. That's all I have.
I'll also address comment to Cadence Development. You know, this has been a long project for you. I know it has, and I know you've made a lot of visits before us. We've been, we've scrutinized very conservatively of this project, but I want you to know with the second read here, upon approval, that you're now a member of our family. We value you here in the community. We look forward to working with you.
Any further? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3148 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3148 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving the petition for establishment of the Highway 58 and Dean Avenue Community Improvement District.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3148 for the Highway 58 and Dean Avenue Community Improvement District.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3148. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3146 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3146 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase property from First Baptist Church of Raymore in the amount of $60,000.
We have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3146 for a contract for real estate purchase.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3151 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3151 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2016 capital budget.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3151 for a budget amendment for the real estate purchase.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve 3151. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us on to new business. The first one requires a public hearing. We have a reading of Bill 3153 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3153 by title only, in ordinance approving the tax increment financing redevelopment agreement between the city of Raymore, Missouri and Raymore Partners LLC for the Highway 58 and Dean Avenue Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan.
Open to public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Bushak.
Good evening. My name is David Bushak. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell in Kansas City. Our firm is Economic Development Council and Bond Council to the city, and I will provide a, a brief summary of the TIF contract. The contract implements the plan that was just approved by the council. I'll hit just some of the high points, since there are, there are many provisions in the contract, some of which you've seen before in previous contracts, but I'll hit just the high points. The source of funding for this plan is, as was described to you previously at the last meeting, the TIF revenue is the only revenue that will be used to reimburse the developer. The city is not planning to issue any debt for this project, and there are no general fund revenues that are pledged for the project, aside from the revenues that are captured as TIF revenues pursuant to the plan. The reimbursement is on a pay-as-you-go basis. Fifty percent of the incremental increase in property taxes and fifty percent of the incremental increase in sales taxes will be captured and used for reimbursement to the developer. The contract carries out the surplus pilots provision that we discussed at the last meeting, which means half of the captured incremental increase in property taxes will be declared a surplus and distributed to the taxing districts, and the contract carries out that provision in the plan. The interest rate on the outstanding reimbursable project costs, the contract provides that it is set at prime plus 2% with a cap of 6%, maximum cap of 6%. Today, prime is at 3.5%, so the interest rate today would be 5.5%. This is consistent with similar contracts that I've negotiated on other projects in recent years, recent being the last, I'd say, four or five years, and with that cap, that is a, I would, I would characterize that as a very favorable provision for the city we've negotiated. The contract provides for the reimbursement of the city's administrative costs, and one new provision that we've incorporated into this contract for the first time is a provision that provides for reimbursement to the city for the first three years to process the request for reimbursement that the city will receive from the developer. Reimbursement is limited to what the plan calls for, which is $1,375,000, plus the interest cost that I just mentioned, and then the payment of the city's administrative costs that are incorporated into the contract. The contract incorporates a retainage account as required by the city's policy, which means that 15% of all the revenues that are available for reimbursement will be held back, and that's the policy provision that's designed to induce developers' completion of the project. There is a provision that limits their ability to protest property taxes, and that provides that they, a property owner within the project area can only protest their taxes if the assessment is 110% or more of what the plan called for. And in the event that they can protest, if it exceeds that 110%, they can only request that it be reduced to what, 100% of what the plan called for. So, so that's a unique restriction that is designed to carry out what the plan called for as far as property valuation. Reimbursement process, as usual, the developer will be required to submit reimbursement requests. Those will be reviewed and approved by the city if appropriate. If there are any particular issues, then the city will work through those issues. Developer will be required to provide proof that they've incurred eligible costs for reimbursement. The city has approval rights for land sales contracts and assignments of developers' rights beyond the three primary tenants that have already been discussed with you by the developer. So, K Jewelers, Q Doba, Mexican Eats, and Panda Express, those are essentially pre-approved purchasers, and any purchasers beyond that are required to be approved by the city. There are some unique provisions that we have negotiated into this contract that are unique to this property and unique to this site, that I thought would be helpful to provide a quick summary for you. Monument Sign is going to be located at the northwest corner of the project area. The reimbursement will be in the maximum amount of $50,000. Any costs beyond that will be covered by the city, and that sign will be a unique marker for the city, so it won't be associated with the project or any of the, any of the tenants. It will be devoted just to what the city wants the sign to say, which will be approved by the city as the project moves forward. Stormwater detention, that is something that the developer needs to present the plans and specifications for, to the city, and will be reviewed and approved by the city. So, that's a, a unique control measure that the city has for stormwater. There are some heightened design standards that are incorporated into the contract. There is a term that's used in the planning world, four-sided architecture, which is designed to reduce the appearance of the backside of structures. So, the structures are required to use this four-sided architecture to minimize the appearance of those backsides. The contract requires significant accent and design features, undergrounding of electric and other utility lines. There are some very specific provisions regarding screening of equipment on the roof, ground equipment and mounted equipment on the structures where space permits, and where screening cannot be provided due to space restrictions, then there need, there, there are some specific provisions regarding painting of that equipment to match, to match the building color, all with an eye toward enhancing the appearance of the property. There are some specific site access and traffic requirements that are incorporated into the contract based on the traffic studies that have occurred. that are incorporated into the contract based on the traffic studies that have occurred to date. There is one very unique provision, I, I think I would call this a one-of-a-kind, that we've incorporated into this contract, which I've never seen before, which allows the city to coordinate with the developer to secure a tenant for the easternmost portion of the western building. So the larger of the buildings that the developer presented to you in their site plan, the city will be coordinating with the developer to identify and secure a tenant for a period of ninety days after the contract is executed. That's, that's a first type of provision I've seen like that in a TIF contract. Unique provision we've incorporated regarding salvaging of materials and items. The city will have permission under the contract to enter the property, inspect the property, and then the developer is required to salvage all the materials and items identified by the city, and can be picked up by the city and used at a location and in a manner identified by the city. So that's a, that's a unique provision for this contract. Final two comments I have deal with a particular development in state TIF law, which has been previously discussed with the council. There's two, two points I wanted to make here. One is a particular provision in the TIF contract regarding a reserve fund. The contract creates a reserve fund into which a certain portion of the TIF revenues will be deposited, and those revenues will be held in that reserve fund until the particular state issue that we've identified has been resolved to the city's satisfaction. That resolution could happen by a change to the Missouri statutes or the expiration of a sufficient period of time after which the city is comfortable releasing those funds. And then the second item, it's not in the contract. It's actually a provision in the ordinance that would approve the contract, provides a non-binding statement of intent by the city to approve an alternate tax abatement or economic incentive plan as essentially a backup plan to this TIF plan in the event there's ever any implementation problems with the TIF plan. It does not bind the council to any future legislative action. It's just a non-binding statement of intent to consider that in good faith in keeping with the intent of this TIF plan. That concludes my initial comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Mr. Bushak, first of all, one of the discussion points that we had as we've been going through this is the mention of a matter of litigation going on in central Missouri. And I know there was some early discussion about having some sort of escrow or lockbox account that locks us up. I don't see language specifically relating into that unless you're, is that, is there some intent under the reserve account, under the reserve fund that will capture or address that issue?
Yes, that's exactly the purpose of that reserve account.
Okay. And then the final thing, and this is the lawyer trying to lawyer another lawyer. Under the ninety days, under the securing a restaurant tenant, there's only a ninety-day window there. It doesn't offer, it just says, "We'll work closely for a period to identify a restaurant tenant." The lawyer in me wants to say that there's a lot of potential ambiguity there. So for the sake of being on TV tonight and having somebody from Cadence, I hope for may plain meaning rule or the opportunity to get collateral establish, evidence established here is, can that be interpreted that as long as, because I'm fearful we're not going to get a tenant that will solidify within ninety days of the signing of this contract, but maybe negotiating with us still. Is there a good-faith intent on both parties that if somebody is, in essence, in the queue, there's a good faith that that process will be allowed to continue even if the closing on that would extend beyond the ninety days?
One comment that I would have to that is to highlight the provision that I mentioned, which is that the city has the right to approve purchasers of property. So in the event that it's a purchase scenario, and it's not one of, it wouldn't be one of the three pre-approved tenants that I mentioned, the city would have approval rights under the contract. Beyond that, I suppose the developer could address that question for you.
And while the developer's coming up, my purpose here is not to try to bind or change any terms, but when you get open-ended doors, people tend to walk through them, so I just wanted clarification.
Absolutely. Name's Justin Kaufman. I'm with Cadence Commercial Real Estate, also a member of Raymore Partners LLC. I guess a couple of things. First of all, I want to remind everybody, we have the exact same goal as you, to solidify a good sit-down restaurant. That will be valuable to us from the standpoint of maximizing sales in addition to having a good tenant mix at the property. So we have the same goal in mind. What we're trying to be careful of is to bind ourselves, to use your word, to an economic transaction that might not be palatable on our end or a, a user that we might find to not be the most ideal restaurant to mix with the rest of our tenancy. You know, we, we pride ourselves on our experience in this regard, in this regard. And so while we want to work closely with the city to help us, to help identify and to show you guys that we're making a good-faith effort in an attempt to solidify the same type of restaurant that we all want at the development, we're trying to make sure the language doesn't bind us to do something that we don't believe is truly in the best interest of the project within that framework. So that's, that's the, that's the purpose of, of, I guess, what you would refer to as the, as the ambiguity. But there is a good-faith intent of, on our end to try to come to an agreement on a restaurant, find that restaurant, and lease that restaurant as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question from Mr. Bushak. In your report, it says interest rates currently today would be five and a half percent, can go as high as six. What I'm kind of curious about, does, does that interest rate have the ability to fluctuate as, as the interest rates go up and down, or is that locked in at the time of the, the contract?
It, it is. It's adjustable. Adjustable, I believe the contract says on a quarterly basis going forward, after reimbursable project costs are certified. So the city will take a look at what prime rate is and add two percent on, on a regular, ongoing basis, but it won't ever exceed six percent.
Is there a minimum?
Uh, no, there's not. I suppose two percent. If prime ever went to zero, it would, it would always be two percent, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, wait a minute, public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please identify yourself to the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fifty-three for the Highway fifty-eight and Dean Avenue Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-two by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-two by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for the acquisition of aerial photography for the city of Raymore, Missouri.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make the staff report.
Thank you. Every two years, the Mid-America Regional Council has embarked on a project to collect aerial photography for cities and counties in the Kansas City metropolitan area. And by completing this project on a regional basis, the cost to the individual communities and counties is significantly reduced. City of Raymore has participated in this program for twelve years, and the cost has each, each, every, every two years, the cost has, has decreased and some years significantly decreased. For two thousand and sixteen, the not-to-exceed cost for the city to get aerial photography for the entire city-bound area as well as the area around the city where we could grow into is a little over sixteen hundred dollars. So that's a tremendous amount of value for, for the price that, that we are committed to pay as part of this overall cost-sharing agreement. So it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to participate in, and again, we've been doing it for the past twelve years. The photography is used by our city's geographic information system. It's a key component of that. The photography is used by departments on a daily basis, so it has a tremendous amount of value for the city. Staff does recommend approval of this cost-sharing agreement.
Questions of staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fifty-two for the Mark Aerial Photography Project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Resolution sixteen twelve, please.
The reading of Resolution sixteen dash twelve by title only, a resolution of the Raymore City Council approving the extension of the preliminary plat for North Cas Plaza subdivision, located in section nineteen, twenty, twenty-nine, and thirty, township forty-six north, range thirty-two west, all in Raymore-Cas County, Missouri.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make the report.
Thank you. The preliminary plat for the North Cas Plaza subdivision, which is located at the new interchange at North Cas Parkway and Dean Avenue, was originally approved back in March of two thousand and fourteen. A preliminary plat is valid for a period of one year. Within that one-year time period, the developer either needs to come forward with the final plat application or can request an extension to the expiration date. So in two thousand and fifteen, the developer did make the request for a one-year extension, and that was granted. The preliminary plat contains ten commercial lots, one office lot, and one very large business park lot. It also incorporates an extension of Dean Avenue as well as some interior roadways to service the subdivision. The Good Ranch Development did come forward back in two thousand and fourteen with a master development agreement. So that does have a big part of the request this evening. The master development agreement was an agreement between the city and Good Otis regarding future development of their remaining land within the Good Ranch master plat community. The agreement includes provisions for post-development water quality mitigation, also incorporates best management practices. It was, there are, there are efforts to work with the stream buffer ordinance that was being discussed at the time and try to incorporate it in with their master plat. It's also important to note as part of this preliminary plat that they do have a lot of common area as part of this plat, and that common area does incorporate all of the floodplain that does cross through this preliminary plat, and there, so that also provides the adequate stream setbacks. So in essence, they are meeting the intent of the ordinance with this particular preliminary plat. So if the request for a one-year extension is granted this evening, the new expiration date would be March twenty-fourth of two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Good is here, is one of the property owners, if you have any questions of the developer. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution sixteen dash twelve for a preliminary plat extension of one year for the North Cas Plaza project.
Second. Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve Resolution sixteen twelve. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-five by title only.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-five by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri providing for submission of a proposal to discontinue application and collection of the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city of Raymore on Tuesday, August second, two thousand and sixteen.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call him this out.
Good evening. Recent state legislation required that cities without, without a use tax, such as Raymore, must receive voter approval by November two thousand and sixteen to continue local sales tax collections on purchases of out-of-state motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors. The ordinance includes the ballot language that was presented to council at the last work session, and as a follow-up to a question asked by Councilman Moorehead, staff did send out an email to all cities asking who had conducted a vote on this. Of those who replied, only one had, and the sales tax was continued, and it was phrased in the same way that we are proposing. The majority of other cities are taking this to the voters in either April or August, and so I would be happy to provide an update after the April election.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fifty-five for the out-of-state vehicle sales tax ballot question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one fifty-five. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading, first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with American Mixers &amp; Plants LLC for the purchase of a three-yard Pental hitch trailer-mounted concrete mixer in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Kraus to make the report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council recently approved a budget amendment for the purchase of a Bobcat-type skid loader, and that combined with the budget for the concrete mixer left, created a fun pool in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We recently auctioned our old Bobcat through our purchasing process and received twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for that, which is about four thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated with the trade-in value. We are requesting to combine all of those funds to purchase the trailer-mounted concrete mixer in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. When all is said and done, we end up with a fund balance in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six dollars in the vehicle replacement fund. This was a specialty piece of equipment, so we only received one bid. We did outline within the memo of the process that we follow when we do receive a single bidder, and do our request, council approve the purchase.
Questions of staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Did you have a question?
I did, but it can wait till later.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, whereas I have been a big advocate of the purchase of this equipment and other Public Works equipment, and whereas I am thinking about making a proposal to have a citywide parade of said equipment with myself as grand marshal, I will proudly recommend, or move to approve Bill thirty-one fifty, purchase of the trailer-mounted concrete mixer.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Does this include the parade?
No, this, this would not include the parade. Any other? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. First reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-six by title only.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one fifty-six by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute an amended employment agreement with Jim Fearborn for the services of a city manager, authorizing approval of this ordinance and execution of the contract herein for city manager for orderly administration of legal, administrative, and contractual matters of the city.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. This bill does call for the approval of an amended contract with myself as city manager. Each year, the, the contract itself is a five-year contract, but each year calls for following my review in March for this particular contract to come before the council for reconsideration each of those years. It's a little peculiar in that regard. The change, the two changes, the single change to the contract and then an understanding. The change to the contract calls for an increase in salary of two-point-five percent, commensurate with the rest of city staff. The second change will be incorporated, Mr. Zero was good enough to share with me the council's conversation relative to your desire that I continue my professional development, and so the first goal that will be established within my performance measurement objectives will be to increase by one the number of professional development opportunities that the council is allowing me to avail myself of. And I want to thank you all for that. I want to thank you all for what I consider to be a very thorough and good performance evaluation process, good discussion, good considerations for me to take forward on the part of the council. So again, I want to thank you for that, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fifty-six, approval of amended employment agreement for the city manager, Jim Fearborn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one fifty-six. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? One abstention, the rest in favor? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, apparently since I'm getting stared at by all the council members, I'll go ahead and volunteer to explain the abstention. I, I actually normally would have voted no on this. I disagree with the terms and conditions of the agreement in the sense that I feel that the compensation is not sufficient. This is not actually disagreement with any of the members of the council. I know that council spoke very highly as well, but the stubbornness and principle of our city manager is what has created this. So, I've never had an argument with somebody where the argument was, "I'd like to pay you more." No, I don't want more. "I'd like to pay you more, I don't want more." But I, I appreciate all the work that he has done. But I, I will respect his principle, but interneas to respect mine that I'm going to disagree. And then we'll address this at a later time. So, to put him on the spot, I wanted to abstain and explain myself. Thank you.
Alrighty. That takes care of new business. I'll move on to public comments. Anybody wanting to speak for us, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public comments, and we'll go to Mayor-Council Communication, beginning this evening with Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, sir. I want to start off with the obvious congratulations to Erica Hill for her accomplishments and Jeannie's a taskmaster. She's going to keep her on track. She's got three more to go through, so we'll see her again. I want to give kudos to the, the city and staff and our retained council for both the handling of our finances, another great fiscal report from our auditors. And I thought the contract for the TIF project was very well-developed. Great job on the part of everyone. It's a lot going on, and, and that in and of itself is a major project. I thought you did a very good job with that. Just want to reiterate the success of TB Hannah Station. And then we've historically referred to that as the Farmer's Market. The Farmer's Market is actually now an event that takes place at TB Hannah Station. And just for those in the audience, if we moved a little too fast, we, we made TB Hannah Station a little bit bigger tonight with the second reading of the purchase. That, I said, have said all along, is going to be a gathering place for people. It's already got the Wi-Fi, and to steal a line from Councilmember Morehead, I too share his vision that it is, who's the painter? Saturday Evening Post, help me out. Norman Rockwell-esque, thank you. I, I see that, too. It's going gangbusters, and, and I couldn't be more pleased, and I think the citizens are as well. Last thing that I would have to say, again, Mr. Mustine is very modest. The score was four to zero, defense pitched shutout. And for those of you, I know Councilmember Morehead and I suspect Councilmember Burke get up early on Saturday to watch, as my British friend call it, the English Premier League. If you want to see some real soccer, we play Saturday afternoon. That's all I have.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody. You checked on me while I was sick. It was something that just kind of a gift I kept giving, but I feel better now, and I am recovering.
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend Erica Hill as well, and Jeannie. You know, the presentation, I could tell that you were very proud to give that presentation. You spoke from the heart. And I like to see that, when somebody is, works with somebody and works for somebody, and to see that bond. And, and I know we're going to hear some more. It's going to continue. I've noticed some signs around the city, and I'm not talking about election signs. I'm talking about the no-tax-increase geo-bond signs at the different spots. And I just want to commend Mike. Again, the, the signs are getting some attention. They look very nice. Somebody's putting them up, too, so I want to say whoever's putting the signs up, they're surviving this weather, this wind, and different kind of weather that we have here in the Midwest. And they look nice. I know the plan is to get them out at the different spots and then bring them together as we go. And did I mention that was for the no-tax-increase bond? So, thank you.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll extend my congratulations to Erica Hill. Fine job, well done. Extremely proud to have her on staff, and thank you for all of your, your leadership and, and guidance, Jeannie. I'm sure she couldn't have done that without a, a, a great mentor like yourself. So, I, I celebrate both of you girls' successes together. It is a team effort, so tell her thank you for all of her, all of her steadfast and dedication that she does for us here in the City of Raymore. Also, I took last Monday off for one of those emo, I almost say emotional, mental, mental break days. It's been real hectic at work, and Monday was one of them days I just took off and said, "The heck with it." I was going to work in the yard, and I did. And during that, I, I had to rent some equipment from our hardware store, and they always bring it out very cheerfully, and, and the great guys down there at the Raymore Hardware Store. But right there in my front yard, the person that, that delivered the, the equipment that I, that I rented, sat there and told me, he says that he had a great time at the community meetings. And he attended it, thought it was great, and that conversation went on fifteen, twenty minutes. I wanted to pass that along to staff, you know. So, yes, we do still continue to hear about, you know, the, the comments as, as far as those community meetings and see the value in it. The last thing that I will do, I'll recognize, you know, and I, I, I think Mike knows what this council feels about, what he's been doing for us. But I, I want to take a moment tonight and say, "Thank you, Mike. Your work is extremely difficult, especially here lady, lately. And I want you to know that I completely appreciate everything you do, your hard work, and all the extra hours you're putting into it. Thank you. It is going to pay off, I believe, and I just not going to divulge what, but we do know, we do know, and it is very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to say I spent about an hour yesterday with my daughter trying to run and get ready for a five K that she's roped me into. And so, we spent time going around Rec Park, and I noticed the baseball fields, and I noticed the quality construction as far as the poles and the out, the outfield. They're filling in the boxes with concrete and making sure all the poles are straight. And I was, I was kind of impressed as we went by, because I was walking at that point instead of running. But park's looking good, the fountain's looking good. I was talking to my daughter about, you know, hopefully, we're going to get a, a community center here, and she was like, "Oh, that'd be right across from the, from the, the pond." And so, we were going around checking out, and she was liking how the, the very back of the park, where it hooks up with Moon Valley. So, we just really spent a lot of quality time there yesterday. It was great. Secondly, for all Americans, St. Patrick's Day is Thursday, so want to give that out there. I've been to Ireland and realized that I'm an American, not an Irishman. Once I got there, I realized that was, that was not the case. But that's, that's something that's always been important to my family. And then, third, probably most importantly, next week, starting pretty much at three o'clock, or depending on what school, spring break starts for the district, and so want to remind everybody, there will be lots of children running around, hopefully enjoying their spring break, and to make sure we're driving slow and looking out for those kids that are running around having a good time. Thank you.
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by echoing the congratulations to Erica for her certification that she earned. Also, kudos to our staff and our financial department. It's always good to hear the good notes on the audit every year, five years in a row, she said. So, great job to them as well. There were way too many things at the beginning of the meeting for me to go through my list of important dates like I normally do. A couple of things nobody mentioned, they clean up at the Good Parkway on this Saturday from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. And then, one other thing, and I think, I don't know if Chief mentioned this or not, but with the new, the new code red, whatever it's, whatever you said, it's Everbridge, people can also find the, sign up for that on, on our website. So, you can just go to the Raymore website and, and sign up for that as well. So, last but not least, the community meeting coming up, Mr. Cattarett mentioned. We got such a great response at our other community meetings for people who still want to be involved and discuss Raymore being a community for all ages. I just want to point that out. Don't forget it. It's March twenty-fourth at six-thirty, and it's here in this room. Alright. Thank you.
Councilmember Hubok?
I attended all of the strategic planning meetings, and one thing that was consistent was people told me they would like to see a downtown for Raymore, that part would help identify who we are. We have a group already in place that could start working on that, and that's the Planning and Zoning Commission and Mr. Cattarett. I would like to see them start doing some work on it. One of the P and Z's main things is they are supposed to plan for the city. Zoning is the secondary, but planning is their primary purpose. And I would like to see them start doing some work along that line, maybe even bring in a consultant. I know you bring in one about every five years to redo the master city plan. But I'd like to see you bring in someone who, with the only idea is, where would we put a downtown in Raymore? If we're going to create one, that's what we need to do. We need to make a decision as to where it's going to be. Then we can plan what needs to go around it. So, I'd hope that you would get busy on something like that. That wouldn't interfere with the rest of the strategic planning in any way that I can see, but it is part of the duties of planning and zoning to help plan the city.
Councilmember Morehead?
To Ms. Warner and Ms. Hill, we can never say enough good things about you guys, even if every single one of us wanted to talk about it. You know, last year, it was actually a joy of mine to go to Columbia and see you receive your president's recognition and to take over. And I know you've been doing that on top of your normal incredible tasks here, taking care of us. And I know you're about to finish that year, and one of the things that really stood out to me was Ms. Hill as well in that, you know, lawyers, we do a number of continuing education hours every year, and we always pat ourselves on the back claiming we're so overworked. And then, when I heard the hundreds of hours that you and Erica do compared to our teens, it really, it was kind of humbling, and the quality work that you guys do here is, that's how it gets represented, and we're very appreciative of that. So, I know that while you're a current leader, and it was great to see hundreds of your peers acknowledge you, as Erica is climbing those ranks as well, and I know that there, she is respected as well. So, I wish she was here personally, so hope she'll catch this on TV or make her watch the YouTube. There you go. Put it in the minutes. The, the other staff member that get, that doesn't get quite as much shout-out, because she doesn't sit up here, is Ms. Watson. So, Ms. Watson, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit. And, and it's deserving because of the five years of the CAFRA award and the fact that the audit is done. In light of the fact that I am now envious, because I am just starting the first phases of the county audit, and damn it, you're already done with the cities, so I'm, I, I may have to hire her away. No, but no, it's very appreciative. It, that takes an incredible amount of work and detail. And so, you know, that's a lot going into all of this, and that is highly valued, because I know other governments and municipalities don't have the quality financial staff that we do. I also think it has to be said, and I, I stated this during the last work session, the comment I made to our city manager was, you remember when your child gets a Christmas present and they pay so much attention to the wrapping? They forget there's a gift inside of it. When we were talking about the streetlights last week, we forgot that, to really quickly acknowledge, we have a way to pay for that. And that is the fact that Ms. Watson and other staff went back and discovered with our oh-six special obligation bond that we have the eligibility for a refund. And that refund is something that other municipalities don't get to do, and we do. And it takes staff being attentive like that to be able to catch up on those things. So, that is a huge home run to be able to, then for us to convert that and, and to do and ultimately refinance. I don't want to get too technical here, but it will ultimately help pay for all of that streetlight, streetlight acquisition. Again, our neighbors can't do that, so that is a huge home run, and, and it demands being acknowledged, Ms. Watson. So, thank you for all that stuff that I, I admire. The last two things are a little more lighthearted. Chief Zimmerman, I do want to apologize. Now that it's warm, my wife has announced her spring art project at home, which was creating squirrel hammocks. I have no idea what that means, but, Mr. Zer, I'm fearful of the liability. So, if animal control does start to alert you about a house on Johnston Parkway, please give me a call. I'll do my best to keep her at bay, but squirrel hammocks, I have no idea what that means. And then, I will accept the challenge, Mr. Holman. I do enjoy rooting for Arsenal on Saturday mornings, but I'm quite capable of coming out and supporting our local United. So, Mr. Burke, you and I'll have to get our drums, our, our big scarves, and go out there and root them on, and you'll see me out at a game. I'm excited. I'm, I'm glad that soccer's going well. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll spend the next fifteen minutes stating the same accolades that has already been stated. No, I'm not going to. We have reason to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session to, to, to discuss litigation matters as authorized by RSMO six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection one.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubok?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
We will be in executive session. We'll return just to dismiss. Thank you, everyone.